To get started?
So we got one of the snowmobiles out of the way, but not the other.
That's what I heard.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for everyone attending. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call shows all the commissioners are present. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from December 4th. And from January 8th, so we can take these individually. Is there any questions on the minutes from December 4th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 4th, 2025.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to abstain.
Two abstentions. January 8th, 2025 minutes. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I can hear. On January 8th. Right after the call to order. Well, both on here, both myself, Chairman. Commissioner Murray and James Shockey raised the issue of the timing of the hearings public noticed. And was assured by staff that it was appropriate.
Okay, so you want that added under the minutes?
Added to the minutes of January the 8th. Modernized.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion with that correction added? Or do you want those to come back?
We'll second that with the amendment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes with the amendment. Next up is unscheduled citizen participation. Is there anyone?
I'm sorry, James, I couldn't find it while you were speaking, but I do have. A question on the minutes of December 4th. It shows that in the header. That both myself and Mr. Finch are absent. But yet later it shows Mistress Finch voting.
Oh. That was in there.
Okay. So we can go back and amend the. Okay. All right, now we'll move on to unscheduled citizen participation. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak about? Something other than what's on the agenda? Come on up. Please give us your name and address for the record and.
Jim Cervinka, 236 Lakeview Drive, Grand Lake. I'm just wondering if the minutes longer than two pages? What's in the pack? What's in the packet that goes out to the public? It's a two-page set of minutes. Where's the rest?
My understanding is these are action minutes now that the town does, so it just gives the motions. That were made and not the details, but I want staff.
That has been going on for at least the last year. I was quite surprised too. Because the word minutes are good. And if the commission would like a different set of minutes. We'd be happy to consider that. We did open it as they had been done.
As a member of the public and sat through a two and a half hour meeting, the fact that it was. The meeting was called to order and adjourned seems a little bit brief.
Very true. I have actually done a full transcription of the minutes. It's three hours and 11 minutes and. Seventy-five megabytes of Word document and I'll be happy to upload that to the record. One of the things that. We did in the last five meetings that I have been here. There were never any recordings that were captured of the planning commission meetings either. So there were the very limited minutes and then there were also none of the recordings. Which staff has been updating to YouTube for the last couple of years. So we actually went back and put onto the website and you can go into past meetings. To all of the planning commission meetings and actually find the YouTube of the previous four months. Did you hear your word? I couldn't find it.
All right, others?
Already 1133 Grand Avenue. So our speaker for the Historical Society Tales of the Past is Matt Reed, your own Matt Reed. So that'll be a week from Tuesday on February 18th.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Jim, I was able to find that on the past meetings. I found that video on the last, on recent meetings, so yep, just give it another try.
All right.
Tom Wyder, 811 Tulakwa. Question board, is there going to be a legitimate discussion on. The lakefront development that's in that meeting?
Um.
For public comment?
I guess to be determined. Right now, the public comment period was closed, but if the planning commission wishes to open it, it can be opened back up for additional comment.
Well, that's, so then that would be my next question. The planning commission is planning on reopening.
I would guess that there's probably. Yes, an interest to want to reopen it, but we'd have to get to that item before.
Okay.
Right, I understand. I assume that yes, the commission will want to hear from everyone, so. All right, anyone else? Not, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is conflict of interest. Is there any of the commissioners that have a conflict with the two items of business?
No conflicts.
Full disclosure, I was in the coffee shop and Scott Mun ran through on his way to a haircut and. I tagged him with some questions on this. Full disclosure.
Okay, so then do we need to vote on whether he should be allowed to vote?
I can clarify what I asked.
Wait, you headed the discussion with.
I asked for a drawing showing where the hump in the road is and will be, and that's all I asked. And it's now a drawing in the package.
I have no issue with it.
I don't have no issue with that.
No issue.
I knew you'd only be there two minutes.
No other conflicts?
I'm hearing no other conflicts, so we'll move on to the first item for discussion. It's a quasi judicial hearing that was continued from January 8th. Resolution 2, 2025, consideration of a variance request to the setback requirements. On lot 12, block 12, Grand Lake subdivision, more commonly referred to as 825 Lake Avenue. And if the commission is good with it, we'll open up the second. Hearing as well, since they kind of are all interrelated.
I move to open the meeting to public comment.
Well. The rest of the commission.
Second.
I don't know that we need.
Buying the two for discussion.
We'll open the two discussions and we can have one public hearing for both.
Fine with me.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open up the second hearing as well. This was continued as well from January 8th and that's resolution 3, 2025, consideration of. Or zoning regulation variances to the Leatherwood Development Site located on lots 4 through 6, block 5. Grand Lake subdivision, lots 9 through 14. Leatherwood Inn by the Lake subdivision, more commonly referred to as 1016 Grand Avenue. 1001, 1005, 1007 Lake Avenue. So with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Erf. Thank you, Chairman Shockey, commissioner members. Pleasure to be in front of you again, of course, virtual this time around, but. Going to make this a little bit shorter from last time, just want to highlight some of the updates. That have occurred and then let the applicant have an opportunity to discuss anything additional from the last meeting. One thing we noticed is staff, as a result of the last discussion, getting into the discussion around 825 accessory structures. If you recall, roughly when this project went out for notices is about when our firm started helping out at the town and so. We're slowly getting a little bit more up to speed and quicker at finding things in the code all over the place and. One thing we identified and did communicate this with the applicant today is that. There is one other variance item that needs to be under consideration for 825 in addition to those setbacks we discussed and that was the. Maximum accessory structure size. There. In the definitions for accessory structures, one of the subbullets, there's about five subbullets there. That give additional criteria rather than it being in the district establishes a 10%. Threshold of square footage for the buildable area of the lot. What this amounts to is about 150 square foot difference. So the building's about 150 square feet more. A lot of that is attributed to. The trash recycling enclosure portion that's on the side of the lot against Lake Avenue, so. That's one item to add in with the consideration and just for. Assistance with the commission as you go to make your recommendations on the two resolutions, I did redraft those. Those resolution statements, which I can pull up when we get to that point that captures that that additional 10% building area. Either for approval, approval of conditions or denial as it is within your packet, so I went ahead and did that to help you all out there. A couple of the other things you'll notice is that the applicant took the planning commission's feedback from last time, adjusted. How the height variance is being calculated and so that dimension. Within the resolution isn't the same because we use the dimension from last time, so we didn't catch that when. The packets went out with that additional change, so that's a minor adjustment we'll do on the resolution itself. When that goes through and gets, you know, signed either way that the commission votes on. Beyond those items, you've received the updated drawing packet within the packet and then the applicant did distribute. The additional drawing that showed some additional perspectives and height calculations. The last thing I'll note is that staff had received a couple of different emails regarding. Some concerns regarding some different code sections that either could or could not apply or the process itself. So staff worked today, pretty much up to just a little, couple hours ago. To address a lot of those concerns and help address some of the comments because as the commission may be aware. This is just the variant step. The applicant will still come forward later as part of the formal development plan where that's where we get into more of the design. And some of the other criteria that at this point we either know and we have to see how it comes to fruition in that process or. We don't know what that's going to look like yet until the applicant gets in through the development plan process. So those are some additional things for you to be aware of that we have been working kind of behind the scenes, answering a number of questions and just. Giving residents some additional clarification in process in which code criteria applies on different steps, so. Happy to answer any questions with that, but I believe it'd probably be best to, with your permission, Chairman Shockey, turn over to. The applicant to present kind of their updates following the last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can, we can do that. I was going to say, I would like just for, and. The applicant can do this, but just outline each of the variances, so those that are in attendance that may have not attended the last meeting will know what variances that we are looking at, so. So as noted by Josh, we do have some table settings that were presented in front of us. Additional drawings, we have two additional letters that were sent. To staff that are now part of the record. And then we do have a packet. I will note that the packet that was sent out does say preliminary development. Application and preliminary flat plans, but that's not what we're reviewing today. It is just the variance. They will then. Move forward with the preliminary development plan and flat, so. With that, we'll turn it over to the applicant. I don't know. Is your name and address for the record?
Sure, thank you, James. So I'm Gabe Bello. I'm an architect with Scott Mun, MA Studios, based at 315 Aggett, Grand. Um. First of all, I'm apologizing for my absence. Last time I was down with COVID and I was watching but unable to sort of participate over the Zoom link, but I'm glad to be here now. And essentially, as Josh described, you know, we updated our drawings with some additional contextual renderings and elevations to try and help. Illustrate our true design intent for building one and for generally the massing exercise that we've undergone for the leatherwood development. And essentially, I wanted to sort of step back for a moment and talk a little bit about where we came from in early design so that everyone could understand maybe how. Building one got to be the size that it is and really the essence of why we feel it's appropriate for the site. So essentially, the treehouse, the existing treehouse onsite has a pretty high ridge line. It has the highest ridge line on. Block 5 and we sort of use this as a, as a focal point in some ways to understand how a tall building could be set back far enough from the lakeside to really have. Very little visual impact and still provide usable program in structure and so. From there, we were focusing on the way that the lake house and treehouse really stepped down towards Lake Avenue and the lakefront itself. And seeing that that sort of terrorist massing concept really works successfully to provide lake views and to not impact. The pedestrian traffic in a, in a negative way. We thought that it was appropriate to design a building on the corner that steps back on every facade to allow for. Programmatic use vertically, but to impact the pedestrian and general population as little as possible, especially as in little, as little detriment as possible, right? So essentially, the way we've designed building one is that it's a three-story building on the alley side and a three-story building on the lakeside and they sort of. Are connected, right, but they step down towards the lake to reduce the effect in the visual appearance of that mass. And really that's where our height variance is born, right, is the fact that our site drops 14, 16 feet on the most extreme part of that slope. And it's extremely difficult to be limited by the height calculation from the Lake Avenue elevation when we talk about the program that's up against the alley. So for that reason, initially, we presented the variance as a variance, not only in the building height, 40 to 45, but also a variance in the calculation method. So that we could calculate from the alley and not. Set a blanket precedent for a 50-foot building in town because we don't feel that that's an appropriate precedent set and we certainly don't intend. That to be a precedent that other future potentially worse development gets proposed based on. So in general, I think the variance language for the height. Uh, variance needs to be specified and needs to be manipulated a little bit in coordination with the commission so that we find. A language that sets us up for really a specific variance on this sort of lot with extraordinary circumstances, we might say, because of the slope. Because Lake Avenue is 10, 12, 15 feet lower than everything else in town. And generally speaking, because it's the core commercial district and we do feel like the enhanced density is appropriate. Withstanding the fact that we want to have as little visual impact and as little sort of detriment to public flow as possible. In the context of the larger leatherwood development, the fact that, you know, our vision is really cutting this plaza and creating a new connection between Grand Ave and the lakefront itself. We think that building one really won't be a major visual. Impotence to anyone, right? It really won't hinder the views from anyone uphill, you know, especially when you get above Grand Avenue, Park, Mount. Above Grand Avenue, Park Mountain, et cetera. Um, it's really not going to be visible whatsoever. Rockies, the building, the existing building. Um, towards Grand Avenue adjacent to building one is only about. Under five feet shorter than our proposed height for building one. So we think it's a palatable scale and it, and it. Could be worthwhile to explore. We certainly feel it has been thus far. Um, otherwise, uh. The variances in question, you know, I think we've received some pretty good feedback from the commission on a few of the other variances on the leatherwood site itself. Right? The fact that the lake house is currently all residential and we're proposing that it stays that way. Um. Mostly, I think the other topic for discussion other than building one's height is eight twenty-five Lake Avenue. And it's probably more a discussion logistically around how we, how we make sure that we follow procedure and, and get the variances we need to make that site. Um, in general, that site is a cornerstone of the, the vision for the project, right? Is enhancing the amount of usable. Free public open spaces, um, connecting the leatherwood plaza from the town hall park here. Down to the lake and then around to the continental divide eventually through the various pocket parts that exist and the, the new ones that we propose. Um, so I, I'm hoping that we can focus the discussion on those two major elements of the project. But uh, we're here for you for whatever clarifications, whatever we can help out with. Um, I would point out on the packet that we submitted. Um, the page numbering, according to the packet page numbering, uh, we produced a number of new renderings, page twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two. That are intended to show a lot more context. We showed street level perspectives from Lake Avenue, from Grand, from. Mountain Avenue on page thirty-three and uh, essentially the idea here is to show that. While the building itself and while the project is large on paper, right? It's a lot of square footage. It's a big parcel and a major part of downtown. Uh, the effect visually is really not impactful in a negative way. It fits with the grand, Grand Lake. Materiality and massing and generally with the sort of variable architectural repetition that we already have here in town. And uh, we feel it's appropriate. So we wanted to give you some more visuals to explain that. Um. And I guess lastly, before I, I open it up to you guys, uh, the additional sheet that. Jim handed out here just before the meeting is just a few sections and elevations of building one and its relationship. The Rockies and its relationship sort of along the alley and along Lake Avenue. To show how the proposed height for building one, which is fifty-one foot, three inches above its lowest corner. How it relates to some of the existing data in town, right? So last meeting, we sort of covered that it's a few feet lower than the. Eagles Landing buildings, but we understand they're a few blocks away, not necessarily a direct reference, just sort of the only four-story building in town. So we used it as reference. But uh, directly onsite, the Rockies three-story building, like I said, is a hair under five feet shorter than building one. The existing treehouse is about four inches taller than the proposed height of building one. And um, on that sheet, we sort of added a red block at the top of building one that represents what the roofline could. Which would allow us to cut almost three feet from the building height. And so if that's a more palatable number. We can go through an exercise where we explore that massing, uh, but we're confident that it's a little bit less appropriate. Architecturally than the pitch roof that we're showing. Um, it'll work in terms of building science, but, but.
Repeat that, you left me there.
So on that additional sheet of drawings.
It's up here, right?
Well, it's, it's on multiples. I don't know. Can we zoom in on one of those so that um, the audience can see it a little bit easier?
That's it. That, that red block represents the mass, as it were, the top of the building if we were to do a flat roof with a small flat parapet. Right? And like I said, we can cut almost three feet off the building height by doing that, but we don't feel it's as appropriate and we think. We've been led up to this point by the commission and by the public and by general opinion, um, to make this. More fitting to mountain architecture by providing the pitch group. That actually allows it to sort of disappear a little more than having a sharp flat silhouette.
So to be clear, you're going from fifty-two to forty-nine?
Yeah, I think it's forty-eight, six or something on, on the sheet there. Yes.
And then is the, the drawing, the one on the, the right, that's showing existing lake and treehouse.
Yeah.
So the existing treehouse property right now is at fifty-one, seven, is that correct?
That's correct. If you're measuring from the lowest point of building. It is at fifty-one, seven. The treehouse right now is cited on the upper portion of the alley hump.
Right.
And so when the alley gets regraded, the treehouse effectively will get taller by nature, right? Um, but that top line as it sits right now is sort of a datum we're referencing.
Okay. Will that roof on the treehouse remain as is in the new construction?
You know, the treehouse is going through some changes because of the undermining of it structurally with the alley grade. Um, so it will change a little bit and the plan is for that roof to lower about five feet. Um, but this existing datum is really what we thought was a, a powerful notion considering the fact that it has such a little visual impact. Where it stands right now, taller than building one.
And then is the um, the elevator. Shaft is the tallest point of the building, correct? Building one?
Yeah, it's, it is. It's sort of shown as that bulkhead belfry kind of.
Right. So then what I guess. Or maybe this shows, is it forty-eight feet to the top of the actual main roof that's gabled?
Well, it's fifty-one, three to the top of the, the ridge line on the pitch roof.
Okay.
Forty-eight and change to the top of the parapet wall if we pivot it to a flat.
Plus the elevator, okay.
Yeah, the elevator is sort of, it's exempt from code calculation, of course, and we could, we could. Dig into the exploration of it architecturally. We felt that it was appropriate to have a bit of an expression. It creates a bit of a landmark sort of bell tower form that. Could be interesting.
And then on building one on the Garfield side of it, um. You have the boardwalk, covered boardwalk. Is it, is there a step back then to the building on the alley side or? Yep, I, I can't tell from the drawing, I guess, up there. Is, does it's.
So the, the building sort of notches back and forth on the alley side. We're stepped back about five feet from the alley frontage at the garage doors. To allow for more turning radius and function and a little bit of coverage of the doors. There's a portion of the building at zero lock on the.
But just on that, that Garfield section between the elevator shaft and the. Uh, alley, it looks like there's relief there as far as when it's stepping up. Everyone is going up, it's stepping back.
Yeah, yeah. If we think of Garfield as planned west, right? On that northwest corner of the building, there's a small retail unit at grade.
Okay.
Garfield and above that, there's nothing. So the residential units step back from there. And I think on, on Garfield and on Lake and on the plaza side of the building. We step back the building at every floor level as opposed to the code regulation of twenty-four feet vertically, twelve feet horizontally. We felt it would be more visual relief to step back a little more than it would require. So that was, that was part of the intent.
Okay. Excellent. Other questions to the applicant?
At the beginning of your presentation, uh, you mentioned that you have a, a building number one is a three-story building on the alley side and a three-story building on. Lake Avenue. It doesn't seem to match.
It's.
The image there.
So it's, it's interesting because look at the elevation straight on from Lake, you're obviously seeing that top floor, which is that fourth floor effectively. Um, this section really describes what I'm, what I'm trying to talk about there where effectively, you know, on a, on a lower level. At Lake, we have the commercial space and we have two floors of residential stacked up there. On the alley side, we also have two floors of residential above the drive. Autopsy and everything. Um, the third floor of the alley building does stretch over the lake type building just a little bit. And really the reason for that was when we initially drew it, we drew it without roof decks and obviously the lake view and the lake frontage is. Extremely valuable and um, from the street perspective, you don't notice a difference between that sort of ten-foot push we did and then the extension of. Deck space on top of those lower units. So we felt it appropriate and, and really valuable to the project.
You talked about an alley building and then you talked about a lake building. This is one structure. Is that correct?
It's one structure. I mean, conceptually, the two buildings are tied together by a circulation core. So on every floor, we have circulation that cuts through the land and the units and provide access and ingress. And so sure, structurally. It's, it's complicated on the structural side, but effectively it's one building because it's built in two phases. It's kind of potentially two buildings. Um, and the way it's laid out in terms of lake elevation and alley elevation, it's also sort of conceptually two buildings. But yes, it's one pendulum.
So when you talk about the phases, you seem like there's an alley phase and a lakefront phase, is that correct?
We haven't really drawn the line.
Okay, because on the plans here, there's a east phase and a west phase. So now I just.
And that's, that's more likely. I'm just saying it's sort of, it's, it is one building, but we're approaching it. On the design concept side as though we're two buildings sitting on this complicated site.
And then what's the um, what's the maximum height that you guys are proposing on Grand Avenue? So you'd mentioned two stories.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the height there that's?
So building three, which is sort of the easternmost building on Grand Ave is thirty-seven feet and change. So it's under the forty-foot requirement because there's that five-foot grade differential between alley and Grand Ave boardwalk. Um, building two doesn't experience that five-foot differential because we're cutting the alley down so much and it sits at about thirty-two. So it's below that thirty-five foot requirement. And uh, that was part of an early pivot in the design. We originally drew one large. Three-story mass on brand that sort of stepped back and then we split it into two three-story buildings. And then we got rid of the top floor there because we thought Grand Ave is really the scale that we need to. Stick with, right? And um, and not override because by no means do we want to be a monster building sitting there.
Right. Because three stories, three stories would necessitate a flat roof, I assume?
Not necessarily. I mean, in, in many ways, that's the best way to do it for ceiling height and for overall building function. Rockies is three stories. It sits about thirty-eight feet up without a grade change. So it's sort of a funky existing non-compliant situation and we didn't want to. We didn't want to further that.
Okay.
Dave, talk to us about parking. So as I understand it, the condos all have two spaces in a tandem setup?
Yes.
Off, off the alley.
Yeah, there's a couple of studio uh, units that have one space. But yeah, all the, all the residential units are parked off alley onsite in covered parking and all those parking bays are individual to the unit. They're all sort of secure and weather protected.
And then how, what's the parking for the commercial on lakeside?
On the lakeside, you know, the parking discussion, we've mentioned it before here with the commission and when we get into the development review, I think it's going to be a larger discussion about. How on-street parking credits work for this particular project. The way the code reads is that. We're allowed to use the available on-street parking credits, right? Which is the entirety of the Grand Ave, Garfield and Lake. Frontage, just the way the code reads. In practicality, Lake Ave is partially striped, parallel, partially not striped. There's discussions about whether parking is allowed there at all. Garfield has a large sort of Aspen tree stand. And a snow storage bank used currently by the town in the right of way of the street where the parking would be. Theoretically, the parking could be there, so we are counting it right now. Um, no matter what, we're prepared to talk about fees in lieu of. Parking spaces, but in, in general. Okay. Well, so in, in general, the commercial space, right? Fourteen thousand, four hundred, if you take that three hundred fifty square per parking space. We're required to provide forty-two. If we count all of the on-street, on-street credits available, we have forty-six on those three frontages. So.
Or if those shops, see their shops, are they accessed from lakeside or from the back from an elevator corridor? How do you get to them?
Uh, excuse me.
So the commercial spaces on lakeside?
Yeah.
How do I get to it? If I'm a commercial guy, not the, not the, not the shopper. Are they accessible from the back within the building or only from the street?
You know, they're accessible from Garfield and from Lake. You could load into the elevator and go down from the Garfield elevator four. Or you could easily load from the Garfield-Lake intersection onto the boardwalk. Um, but yes, they're, they're accessible on both of those frontages, not the alley. And the plaza.
But they're not, they're not accessible from a corridor behind them inside?
They are.
They are.
Yeah, beyond, behind.
Okay.
Yeah, behind the specific commercial units, there's a public use amenity corridor with some restrooms, some storage.
Okay.
All meant for that.
Okay.
And we can get deeper into the plans during development review as well. And I would note, James, you know, the plan package is called development plans because we put it together in an effort to prepare for that.
Right.
Process.
Yep.
And we figured maybe one of these meetings would also just call it the development review and.
Those restaurants you just mentioned, are those for public use?
Yeah, they'll be attached to the retail spaces for public use.
I guess going back to Grand Avenue, why, why are you nearly maxing out the height if you're only going two stories?
Sorry, what?
Why are you max, nearly maxing out the height if you're going to two stories?
Sure. Yeah, it's a good question. I think if building three is a good example because the alley, even though we're cutting it down significantly, it's still quite a bit higher. It's about six feet higher than. Brand at the back of that building. And so the building is really split level. And the front residential units sit on top of the retail space at a lower height, right? At twenty and change or something at the top of that part of the building.
Okay.
But as you step back towards the alley, the whole building shifts up about six feet. And so the back units above the garage. Get towards that, towards that thirty-six number or whatever it is, thirty-seven.
Okay, so if you're, say, in the middle of Grand Avenue, looking at the building, you're looking more at a. A thirty-two foot and a twenty-some foot building than you are.
That's right. It's, it's similar to the neighbors where there's sort of a lower mass and then an upper mass as it retreats away from Grand Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, reduces the visual impact for sure.
You, so you couldn't put a three-story unit on Grand Ave?
We could. Yeah, we could, we could pinch it all. We can mess with it and, and reduce ceiling heights and, and fit it in there if we wanted it to be dense, but we want it to be nice.
Okay. Other questions? Sure, we'll have more after. Have a comment.
Sure. Thank you all.
Jim Kreisery, twenty-eight Grand Avenue, number two oh six. I'm the project manager for Spirit Lake Condos, who is in order of. The Leatherwood Project and I'm representing the group. Um. Uh, one thing I want to clarify, I think that you asked if the general public could use the bathrooms for the commercial. It's just for the use of the commercial tenants themselves. So just like the hardware store I was in there today, they got a big sign on the front row, this is not a public restroom. It's basically their customers and that would be the case. For the restaurants in the commercial space. It's not for that. If you're a, if you come and you're sitting in the plaza and you're doing business with people there, you can use the bathrooms, but it's not going to be like. Hey, you can go up there and use the bathroom. It's not a public restroom. Um, just real quick, a couple of things. Um. I want to talk more about, and I want to just point out to that map that was up there just a minute ago, if I could, Elena, I don't know.
Josh, could you pull that back up?
No, Josh, should it? The one thing I wanted to, where this fourth story, and it is one billing. For sure. There's no ifs, ands or buts. It's always John, he's always tried to explain that to me too, the same way. And it always comes back to me is it's one, one bill. And how we got to the fourth story is, is when we have some. I want to wait for the map to show, to come up.
Josh, can you please pull that map back up?
Yeah, so I'm sharing my screen. Which Pedro looking for, Jim?
The map that you just had up of the, the sheet that was sent to you today by uh, Gabe.
Frozen. We're frozen.
Oh, the one you guys just printed off the air?
The one you just had up there.
We're frozen.
We're frozen on this end.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
So it's not going to come up?
Oh.
I'll give it just.
Okay. Trying doing this. Are you seeing the screen yet?
No.
Okay, let me try it again.
No, we're kind of in a.
Hey Josh, if you can hear me, it's working fine on Zoom.
Okay. Try it again.
Well, I'm, I'll move on.
Yeah, go ahead. We have copies in front of us, so we'll just.
I wanted to point out what I'm talking about.
Okay.
We're getting there. I'll let you know as soon as I'm there.
So basically variances are for hardships and then it's not a severe slope, but the slope on the site is, is a hardship. And so. And so normally, the code reads thirty-five feet in commercial or CT zone. And you have thirty-five feet, which is basically what the Boardwalk Plaza project is. It's basically what the uh. Porta Crossing project is and so on and so forth, all the projects in town that can or, or will be built is thirty-five feet. You then, a, a year or so back, you guys worked on the step-back regulation that we put into adopted for the code. And so when you've got a slope and then you've got a thirty-five foot building that comes into that slope. Mainly, and it also says in the code that you have to have your parking in the rear of the building and the access to that parking has to come from the rear of the building. In most cases. And so, so I have a, a slope that the commercial is in the front. It says the front fifty feet can be commercial and the back fifty feet can be parking. We are unable because of the slope to dig down and get the parking in there, so. There's commercial in the front because the slope goes up and it goes back and I don't know what that measurement is, but it's at least fifty feet. And then there's a hallway for bathrooms and for access upstairs and to the back for trash, which I don't remember.